Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of June 12, 2025. This is a public meeting, but it's also being held as a hybrid, meaning people can join and participate on Zoom. For the record, the meeting ID on Zoom is 870-0173-1933. I recognize in attendance tonight myself, Joe Parisi, Michael Nyman, Peter Canavo is on Zoom, Ronald Wilson is here, and Lauren Norton, and I declare we have a quorum. First, the order of business would be the approval of the minutes of 5:29.
My only question is, I don't think there was a second on the previous approval of minutes. I don't have it with me. It just sort of caught my attention.
Oh, what it said in the minutes?
Pretty minor.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay, we entertain a motion on the--
I would move approval of the minutes as written.
Motion made and seconded. Approve the minutes. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Norton?
Aye.
Yes. Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Minutes are approved. There's quite a consent agenda here. We had a lot of decisions come in. If anyone has a decision on here they don't wish to just approve on the general consent, it can be pulled. Anybody have any?
Could not. I'd send right--
The decision?
Yes.
So, Michael, 65 is on there again because she did not have the map and lot on the thing, and the clerk's office wants the map and lot on their decision. That's the only reason it's on there. Other than that, it's the same decision.
Okay, so the consent agenda approves decisions. Approves the chair to sign the following decisions. Nine Biskey Head Point, Three Plum Court, 23 Dale Avenue, 65 Atlantic Road, Seven Lighthouse Way, 95 Rear Mapwood Avenue, 68 Twilight Ave., and 9 Waterman Road. We'll take a motion to approve--
Make a motion to approve the chair to sign those decisions.
Second.
Motion made. Roll call.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. We have two continued hearings tonight before we get to our five new hearings. The first is the petition of Raymond Young seeking a special permit under 5.2, 5.24.6 to construct a detached ADU requiring dimensional relief at 162 Western Avenue.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Aiden Church. I'm an attorney with Seaside Legal Solutions, address 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, so just to recap, we're proposing to construct an accessory dwelling unit. At the April 24 hearing, I introduced the project. The board determined that they lack sufficient information as to the location of the ADU, so the applicant staked that location out. I hope that the board was able to go out there and view the staking, but if not, I do have some pictures in here. Here's just a picture that I submitted with the supplemental filing. Just, this is not to scale, but it is just to give you an idea of where that ADU is proposed relative to the house and the driveway and the wall in the front. And then here, if you are unable to get out to the site, here's just a picture of the staking. So if you'll remember, during my last presentation, I was unable to access my presentation. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to go through quickly, just to make sure I get everything on the record in terms of the legal standards and stuff like that. So we're in the R20 medium to low residential district. There's an existing single-family structure on the lot. The applicant acquired the property in 2012. So we are requesting relief for a special permit under the ADU regulation because the ADU will encroach into the front yard setback area. It will be closer to the street than the existing principal structure, which is not allowed under the ordinance, and it will exceed the maximum 20-foot height for an accessory structure that doesn't meet the setback requirements. So here's just the map geo and an aerial photo again. Here's just the existing structure, and then that's the front entrance. And if you went out there, you'll know that you go in there and just take a right, and then in that area to the right is where that proposed ADU is located. Here's a site plan, and then there's a close-up of the structure, and then the floor plans, which I can go back to if you have any specific questions. So the general requirements for an ADU, as you know, are that they need to, well, one of the owner-occupied, single-family requirements has been overruled by recent statute and regulations, but we still have to comply with short-term rental regulations, needs to provide all the necessary amenities for a habitable unit, needs available parking. You can only have one on-site, and it must be compliant with all the state building code, state and local building and sanitary code requirements. In this case, we do meet all of those. And then for the detached ADUs under 5.24.5, we, in this case, we do have 900 square feet of habitable space. We meet the architectural integrity of the principal structure as required. We do not meet the setback requirements. We're closer to the street than the principal structure, and we are more than 20 feet in height. So the special, the standard for a special permit is that we must meet the purposes of Section 5.24, and we must not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. So here, we do meet the purposes of the ADU statute. We're providing an ADU in the R20 district. It's a diverse housing option that can be used for rental now or in the future. We conform to the neighborhood character. We're providing an additional housing unit. Gloucester's housing stock is an economical unit, both for somebody renting and to construct, you know, relative to an entirely new, single-family home. And we provide the owner with potential rental costs, rental income to defray housing costs. Finally, we don't believe that we're going to have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. It's a relatively large lot. The house, the existing house is set back on that lot, leaving only really room in the front to put an ADU, and that front is surrounded by a tall wall, which you saw in that last picture, which will shield the ADU mostly from sight. And then, you know, the neighborhood to the right also has an accessory structure in the front yard. So, you know, we're not, we're not detracting from the neighborhood in that respect. And just finally, we do meet the architectural integrity of the existing structure. Then, yeah, we're just, it's mostly shielded by that wall, so, you know, you'll hardly even see the ADU. So again, we're just asking for a special permit for an ADU under 5.24.6 because we are in the front yard, we're closer than the principal structure to the street, and we're exceeding the required height. Thank you. Let me know if you have any questions.
Let's go over the, you're saying you're only asking for a special permit?
Yep.
What about the height?
So the special, the ADU special permit should be able to cover any, you know, nonconformities?
Over 20 foot. You don't meet the setback.
Right.
I'm still unhappy with the plot plan. I thought you were gonna, I can't believe you didn't come back with a better plot. Something that I could stamp with confidence that would tell me where this is going to be built. I told you that the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I was under the impression that the board just requested that we stake it so you could see, you know, that--
That was because we couldn't even figure out where it was on the property because it's behind the stone walls. It doesn't even look like it belongs there. Now, you're saying the parking's going to be shared, so you're not showing us any parking on your plan. You gave us a plot plan that personally I, I won't sign. Something you Xeroxed out of a mortgage application or something. I mean, I was expecting a plan of land that gave us a little more information.
So, I mean, I'm happy to get the surveyor out there and, you know, submit a supplemental site plan if the board requires. Again, I'm sorry if I misunderstood--
The comment about what you have to give us and what I'll vote for is two different things. You can, you said that at the last meeting, and I said, I don't like that. You said, oh, we don't have to provide you with a detailed plot plan. I says, oh, you don't, and I don't have to vote for it. So I thought that we were clear about what we were looking for, at least what I was looking for.
So I just understood that to mean that you wanted it to be staked out, and then you would look at the staking in relation to that plot plan.
Did the surveyor put those stakes in? Because it was a jig-jag of ribbon and stakes, and is that really where it's going to be?
So I believe the applicant--
It wasn't a rectangle.
Sorry?
That what was staked out was not even a rectangle that would indicate the property. I mean, it was all over the place.
So, I mean, it is, it is difficult to stake that with the grade changes, obviously, but I believe the applicant staked that just as a, you know, where he believes that that structure would be located.
Well, somebody at some point's got to dig a hole.
Right.
And they got to know exactly where we approved it. Because if they put it in not where we approved it, then that opens up a whole bunch of other problems. Nobody wants that to happen.
That's understood. I mean, the, so the site plan does show the property lines and the setbacks off each, off each property line, and the distance from--
Any other questions?
How many square feet will this actually be? The statute, the ordinance says it's a maximum of 900 square feet or the 50% of the total habitable space of the principal dwelling. Those, that's one or the other. So what, what are you?
Right. So we are, we're over 900 square feet. Our understanding is that needs to be 900 square feet of habitable area, which is defined in the, in the building code as excluding, you know, utility spaces, storage spaces, bathrooms.
That's when you're talking about other things in the ordinance. The ADU provision was, is fairly new. It was, it was not, it didn't say 900 habitable square feet. It says, and we haven't approved an ADU that was bigger than 900. We measure the plan, and we say, okay, how big is it? Is it under 900? Yeah. So this is easily like 1,100.
So the, the way, the way that I think about that is, you know, if you have a detached garage, for example, where, you know, a portion of that is not habitable space, then, you know, that portion would not be counted towards the ADU. So--
But it's, it's one test or the other. So you're either 50% of habitable space of the main dwelling, you can calculate that, or you're 900 square feet. There's--
It has to, it has to be lesser of the two, whichever one is lesser of the two, so the 900.
I know what they're getting at because in the ordinance, we talk about habitable space. That's a different, that's where, like bedrooms, bedroom-like rooms, certain size, minimum size rooms, you don't count the hallways, you don't count the bathroom. But that's not in the ADU ordinance, you know? So, Michael, you were there.
Yeah, no, I'm just commenting. Ron was actually just pointing out, if you read the ordinance, the 900 square feet doesn't talk about habitable space. The 50%, and you know that, and the 50% does talk about habitable space in the house.
Yes.
So that habitable space does not qualify, the 900 square feet in that particular line of the ordinance. That's all.
So our understanding was that it would be 900 square feet of habitable space. If the board, you know, wants us to reduce that down to 900 square feet, then we can do that as well.
Pardon me, but it's not a question of what the board wants you to do. It's a question of what the ordinance states, and the ordinance states unmodified 900 square feet in the ADU.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I would, you know, suggest that the board can even approve more than that by special permit. Anyways, the board can, you know, approve any dimensional nonconformity by special permit under the ordinance. So, you know, I think that you can approve something greater than 900 square feet anyways, just by special permit. If that's, if you're not inclined to do so, then again, we can--
Sure. I think typically, and I'm trying to remember from past ADUs, I'll let you speak after, but my memory is the only time we've allowed more than 900 square feet is when there's a building that already exists, and that, that would be like silly to make them rip off 50 square feet or 25 or 100 or whatever, when the building's already there and they're converting into an ADU.
So Joel Favaza, Seaside Legal, 123 Main Street, just as a point of reference, I have personally permitted two ADUs through this zoning board where we used habitable square feet of 900. To be fair to Mr. Rakari, it was his two direct predecessors, Donald and Bill before him, both interpreted that ordinance to say that 900 square feet is of habitable space, bathrooms, hallways, et cetera, did not count toward the 900 toward that. And I have personally permitted two ADUs that in raw square footage were larger than 900 square feet, new construction, but habitable space, as interpreted by Donald and Bill before him, was less than 900, and you approved those. So that's--
So I don't want to speak out of turn. I'm sure that I sat on the board when you did that because I've been here almost as long as the board's been here. I don't remember that as part of our discussion, right? So I believe what you're saying. I'm guessing if we can go back in the record, those, those buildings are probably bigger than 900 square feet, gross, and work within the 900 square feet. I'm guessing from my perspective, it was an issue that did not come up. That's, that's my memory or lack of, or lack of memory at this point.
We may have permitted a larger one, but it doesn't mean we have to.
No, I, yeah, right.
We may be saying, no, we want 900 feet. And personally, I would want a real plot plan.
So before we, so I just want to be careful to not make you go do that and then come back to us again. So I think I want to be clear what the directive is here. Are we saying, so I'm in agreement, I want a better plot plan as well, showing exactly where that building's going to be and so on, for us and for future. But I think, secondly, are we requiring a modified plan to reduce the gross structure to 900 square feet? Or are we not asking for that? I just want to make sure he understands what we're asking for.
I'm not hung up on the 900.
Okay.
If we vote for the special permit and it's, and it's 1,034, whatever it is, I don't object to it. I don't object to, it's hidden pretty well. It's not going to offend anybody.
It's a huge house--
But I can't tell. I've been to the site twice, and this, to me, is not a legal document that we can say you can build this ADU there. Got to have something better.
Okay, so we're asking for a good plot plan. We're not asking him to modify the building. We're implying from the ADU request that--
I can only--
I'm, I'm just--
Yeah, I can only speak for myself.
No, I understand that.
I don't have a problem with the site.
I understand that. I'm going to give others a chance to speak, but I just want to make sure--
Can we know what that--
Yeah, so it's, it's 54, it's a pretty good size, by 23. So 50 and 80, like 1238 square feet, 1,238 square feet. What do you got, 1242? I was pretty good on my head. I was four feet--
I said 1240, 1274 is what I see on the spot plan? Was that just--
It's 1244, whatever. It's not outrageously big, but, you know, it's tucked in. I liked everything about it except not knowing, like I say, at the end of the day, I got to stamp it and sign it, saying it's, they can build it there.
So I'm happy to request a continuance and come back, but, you know, if the board's amenable, we're happy to also take a condition that will submit a supplemental site plan that's, you know, eligible to be stamped. I don't, I was going to ask--
Well--
Anybody uncomfortable?
My only, my, I mean, I'm not against it if everyone else is on board. My only concern is if we give it that condition and it comes back and it's not where we thought it was still going to be, are we going to keep having to move it? And I just want to be clear that when they do have it surveyed and stamped, is that going to be to our satisfaction indicating where it's supposed to be? That's all. I don't want it to be misleading again, and then we're back to square one.
It just seems to me--
That's all.
I'm comfortable with voting with the condition that they present you, Joe, with a plot plan that you can stamp, right?
Okay.
And if you can't, that's, and if you don't stamp it, then the decision's not going to be finalized, and they can't build it.
Right.
So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable.
Right. It's consistent with what we have, but more specific.
Yes.
Okay, and we've already had public testimony on this, so--
Sounds good.
I just, what is the height limit for ADUs?
20.
Well, that's what their project's going to do.
It's over.
Do we know how many feet over it is?
Yeah, on the--
It's 22 and a half feet.
22 and a half.
All right, thanks. Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that you opened this up to public comment in the, in the, in the last hearing.
We can do that. Why don't we take public testimony?
He didn't do his presentation, wasn't he?
That's right, he's machine. It was not working. For anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, any in favor, if you're on Zoom, you hit your raise hand button, you wish to speak, you're in the hall, just come forward. And everyone's reminded at any time, your name and address first for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, any opposition. Again, seeing none, we'll close public testimony. I entertain a motion to approve with the conditions as we've talked about.
Petition of Raymond Young is seeking special permit pursuant to 5.24.6 to construct a detached ADU requiring dimensional relief at 162 Western Avenue. I would move approval of the special permit as presented with the condition, so help me with exactly how we're going to say it, but with the condition that the applicant will present a certified plot plan? Does it need to say--
Showing, yeah, showing everything on--
Showing the ADU--
Showing the ADU as it's currently drawn.
The setbacks as submitted, and the sizes as submitted.
Consistent with the application, already filed.
Yeah, that works. Take that work in your--
Decision, yeah.
Please. So I move approval of special permit.
Second that I'm up.
Anyway, a motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on. Next continued hearing is the petitioner, Rebuild Gloucester LLC, seeking to appeal the decision of the building commissioner pursuant to Mass, Mass zoning ordinance, Gloucester zoning ordinance 5.11 at 6810 Orchard Road and 2224 Grapevine. Bernie Fava.
Thank you. For the record, once again, my name is Joel Favaza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Leo Solutions, 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. Good to be back with you guys tonight. We're picking up where we left off. There were two issues. We reached out for a determination from the building inspector as to how to proceed with construction of additional units on lots located on Orchard Road and Grapevine. And the first issue is, do these five lots comprise a single proposed development? Because the inclusionary housing requirements only apply in application for construction, even if it's across contiguous parcels that comprises a proposed development site. So you have to say, hey, listen, this is, this is one single development, and therefore, even if you have units across property lines, they're counted collectively. If the five parcels are not considered single development, then the inclusionary housing doesn't apply, period. It would just apply to each of the developments individually. The second one, if you do find that it is a single development, then we need to go over what is segmentation. The ordinance has language that says segmentation, again, they're trying to make sure that you can't just chop the lots and immediately put up a duplex on each lot and try and do an end run around. And so they say, you know, you can't have a application for an addition or one or more residential units that results in six or more lots or dwelling units above the number existing 36 months prior to an application. And so just to quickly go back over, the GZO doesn't define what a single development is, right? And I think onsite is a pretty good example of what a single development across property lines looks like, and that would be six and eight Orchard Road. We're not, again, we weren't last time. We're not here tonight trying to say six and eight are separate. They are clearly one development site, and even though they go across a property line, the two units on six and the two units on H8 add up to four that would be counted toward this. If you wanted to go beyond that, you know, beyond the six or more, you'd be triggering it. Even if it was three and three, you know, we wouldn't be able to come to you and say these are separate. They share a driveway, they share utilities, they have shared common space, they're part of the same condo development, et cetera, right? On the other hand, we have these two lots down on Grapevine. They don't share the same street. They don't share access, parking, utilities. They're not going to be aesthetically similar. We're not building, you know, buildings three and four that match what's happening over at six and eight Orchard. It won't be part of the same condominium complex. And then again, you know, just for, to think about this conceptually, if you were to leave six and eight and try and get over to these properties, it's 1,000 feet of travel. If you're on foot, walking leisurely, it's a five-minute walk, and you pass 13 unrelated house lots before you get around to what the building inspector said is part of a continuous development. If you wanted to wave to your neighbor, you could walk to a back fence and, you know, wave to them over on Grapevine, but there's no, you know, getting to and from. Another point that I made last time was, in the earlier concept, the owner considered doing more of a contiguous development, and that, when they went to run utilities, there were utilities sufficient in Grapevine but not in Orchard. Actually, there were sufficient in Orchard, but the city didn't know they had a 10-inch waterline in Orchard somehow. And so when they said, oh, we need to run utilities, can we, will come up Grapevine, the DPW said, no, 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 you're not running utilities across unrelated lots to service the ones in Orchard. And so the point I made last time, making it tonight, is that the city all appreciate their different regulations. The city is still one corporate body, and as a whole, seems very unfair, on a very basic sense, to have the DPW director say, these are separate projects, you can't run your utilities through Grapevine to get to Orchard. And again, it cost my client over half a million dollars, infrastructure work, to run the line a different way, and then have the building inspector say, no, 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 these are in fact related, and these are one project, and you have to, you know, count all of them continuously for your application of the inclusionary housing ordinance. And so again, my request is just to, you know, the easiest way out of this is to overrule the building inspector, say 22 and 24 Grapevine are not part of the single development that includes six and eight Orchard, or 10 Orchard for that matter, the old house that's still up there on Orchard Street. And then if that's the case, then we're done. And I can, I can stop here if the board wants to discuss that, and then if, you know, make a determination one way or the other, I can proceed accordingly.
Was this one piece of property owned by one man?
This was one piece of property that was divided into five lots in 2022. It is still under common control.
I mean, we have thousands of subdivisions, streets and everything, that are on two roads that were part of a subdivision. Some you can't reach the other side. You go down Winger Sheek and look at those developments. So those arguments, I'm not really sure. But anyway, we did, we do have on Zoom with us tonight, Rocco DiFilippas, the Assistant General Counsel. And, but before we even get into the legal part, the thing that I was questioning in the beginning-- questioning in the beginning, we always talk about, we shouldn't do things that go against the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. You write that in your decisions, we hear it all the time. And the purpose of the inclusionary housing requirements are to increase the supply of housing that is available to and affordable for low income and very low income houses, to encourage a greater diversity of housing in Gloucester, and develop and maintain housing that is eligible for inclusion in the 40B subsidized housing inventory. So I would think any attempt to circumvent that would be going against the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. That's what I started from. Now, we've since gotten some legal advice and opinions on the project, and I'd like to give Attorney DiFilippis the opportunity to come on and give us a little input on his advice and what we asked him to come up with.
I have a question before he comes on, because Joel, I believe, has given the, sort of, the first half of his presentation.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
We gave the whole thing the last time. And then we asked for a continuance to get more information, get a legal.
I mean, I don't. I just want to make sure that we're not, I think my concern is that Attorney Philip is going to come on and address quite a bit more than Joel just addressed. So it's just about fairness for me. I just want to make sure that the way that we're proceeding is fair.
Yeah, I mean, he had his full presentation. We, this is about.
Would you like me to finish?
Of the building inspector's letter. This isn't even properly before us, because there was no application for a building permit submitted, which is, there were some mistakes made, but that's the trigger. It shouldn't have been an appealable thing, just getting a, asking the building commissioner for a decision. But it got there, and now we're here. So we had asked for an opinion from legal. I'd like to hear it at this point.
Fine. He can rebut the opinion, so.
Definitely. Rocco, you're on.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Rocco DiFilippis, Assistant General Counsel for the city. I think my, my brother is correct. You're dealing with an interpretation of our zoning ordinance, and you're looking at terms that are not defined in the ordinance itself. So you have to give them their everyday common definition, and you use them as you would any other word that's not defined in the zoning ordinance. So to me, the text is very clear that it says that Section 5.11 shall apply to any application for residential development that results in six or more dwelling units on any parcel or contiguous parcels that comprise a proposed development site. And in the applicant's application, they have acknowledged that that application that, that proposes the development site is the 2022 A and R. And so that locus is the development site. So if the development results in six or more dwelling units on that, on that locus, then Section 5.11 is going to apply. As regards segmentation, I think it's a little bit confusing because Section 5.11.3 Sub 1 is where the, the application of the ordinance is given, saying that it shall apply to these developments. Section 2, subsection, subparagraph 2 is, is saying, hey, and you cannot segment to avoid this requirement. And then it defines segmentation. So while it's talking about the, calculating the number of dwelling units, it is not necessarily talking about how Section 5.11 applies. Subsection 1 is the clear language in the ordinance that says it applies to any residential, application for residential development that results in six or more units. And so the other issue here, so I think it's, it's clearly a single development that we're talking about here, because as the chair pointed out, when the zoning board is called on to interpret the zoning ordinance, it tries to find a reading that is reasonable, that harmonizes the purpose of the ordinance. And in this particular section, that, those purposes are laid out so that they're clear. So the board should be guided by those principles and those purposes as it's interpreting the zoning ordinance, so that it can find an interpretation that is in harmony with those clear purposes rather than conflicts with it. So I think that it's, it's clearly a single development site. And now the question about the building commissioner's determination regarding the 36-month period in the segmentation provision, I think that ultimately, the clear language in this, in this section talks about the number of units that existed 36 months prior to an application to develop a parcel or set of contiguous parcels that were under common ownership. And so if we all agree that the 2022 A and R is the application that began this development, then what that section is doing is not creating a 36-month cool-off provision that says so long as development is spaced out 36 months, it won't trigger the requirements of Section 5.11. It's saying that this is the formula for calculating the baseline number of units that are fixed at a certain point in time that are then compared to determine whether or not the, the development has resulted in six or more units. So I think the clearest reading of 5.11.3 Sub 2 is that you would look at 36 months prior to the, the 2022 A and R, and you would ask how many residential units were in existence at that time. I believe it's one. And so then that would be the fixed number that would be used to compare whether or not future development results in six or more. Because ultimately, again, going back to what the purpose of the ordinance is, the purpose of the segmentation provision is to prevent the ordinance from being bypassed through phased development. And so rather than creating a cooling off period, it creates a fixed point in time to compare the units that were there. And so that's the way that I would encourage the board to read the plain language in the, in the ordinance.
Donald? Yeah, thank, thank you. And I just want to, I'll just point out, Mr. John Gisso is here. He's one of the principals behind the LLC. He came up in Florida to, to watch tonight. And if there's any questions for him, he's happy to speak. So let me just put up. So I think, right, I think we said we need to say about the single development issue. I'll just speak to what Rocco just spoke about with segmentation. So the first thing I want to point out is that I think we have some conflation of terminology. And so I understand Rocco's basically saying is, the 2022 A and R, that was your, you know, application to develop, right? Well, first off, an A and R is not controlled by the zoning ordinance, is not controlled by the building code. An A and R is a totally separate way to divide land controlled by subdivision rules and regulations. And there are court cases that are very clear, you cannot condition what are otherwise by right divisions of land via subdivision control with affordability. So if the city's legal position is that this zoning ordinance somehow applies to what the planning board is doing, that's great, because the judge is going to throw them right out of court when they try and bring that to them, right? You can't condition subdivision control stuff based on zoning restrictions with, relative to affordability. So.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Every subdivision that goes before the planning board gets kicked with the inclusionary zoning if it's over six.
So the subdivision itself does not. What happens is when they go to pull building permits, which are governed by the zoning board, then this section kicks in. But the planning board's, you know, definitive subdivision approval, can't put this affordability onto it. The trigger is through the zoning and through the building, which is fine. And that, and that's how you get it. So if I do a 20 lot subdivision, and I start going, when I get past six or, or two six, zoning kicks in, because zoning still applies. I'm just saying, to say that, I'm not saying that, you can't say that the subdivision process is a development or an application under this. We had used that.
So all you're doing is pushing it ahead to the first building permit.
So what we, that's, no, that's, that's exactly right.
You've still got to look back for years.
That is exactly right. And so, and so again.
If, if we take that as fact, that's all.
Right. And so, and so I'm just, right. And so I'm just going to walk through the hypothet, as, as we read it. Again, this is not us, you know, this is us reading the plain language of the ordinance, right? So using that as the starting point, when, you know, when the five lots are created, right? There's a unit on 10, you know, I'm sorry, this is current unit, should say current units, one, right? So then we go to February 5th, the first new unit comes online. So now we have one at 10, one at eight, two total. We had one 36 months previous, so we're one over what we had 36 months previous. February 14th, 2025, Unit 2 comes on. Now we're at three total. Still only one existed 36 months ago. We're at two over. March 18th, six came online at the same time, Units A and B. So now we have five current units. Again, if you're considering this all one development, which I'm not conceding, but for the discussion, you have five units across all five lots. And 36 months prior to anything happening on March 18th, you still have one, so you're four over. And so they stand before you today, if we wanted to apply for a permit, right? If we had to apply for a building permit, we would have, you know, the five units in existence, one of which existed 36 months prior. And so when we apply for, when we apply to develop 22 Grapevine, that would still only be Unit 5. And last time we heard, Attorney Egan said that, that the next unit was going to trigger, because there would be six total across all of them. Going forward, again, this is what we asked the building inspector also, is when we get to February 6, 2027, well, now we've got two units. When, you know, when I go to February 6, 2027, and I go to apply to develop 24 Grapevine Road for the first time, you go, how many units existed across all these lots 36 months ago?
No, that's not what he's saying. It's when you start. People could just delay building subdivisions to avoid the inclusionary zoning. I can't believe anyone who wants to develop in this city is trying to get around the inclusionary zoning.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
That has, should have a clear answer.
Yep.
When was the, I, I don't think we should be talking about 27, 26, or 25. If you don't like the A and R date, what was the date of the first building permit involved in the eight Orchard or 10 Orchard development?
Um, I, I, all I have is when the units were granted their occupancy permits.
Well, that's not going to be it.
That's not where it goes.
No. So again, again, that, that's okay. If we, if we play that, that's fine. Because again, right now, two data that stand here, there has never been an application to develop 22 or 24 Grapevine. And so if in 2027, someone goes to apply for the first time to develop 24 Grapevine, the question per the ordinance is, how many units existed 36 months prior to application? And the answer in 27 will be two. And then you go, you know, a few weeks later, and it'll be.
Doesn't roll forward.
Joel.
Yes.
Pardon me.
Yes.
Attorney Fivaz.
That's fine.
I think I'm going, I'm going to show my hand here. I believe this is a single development. It's just a question of when the triggering date is. So it's going to be 36 months prior to the first building permit.
And it doesn't roll forward.
And it doesn't roll forward. So all I want to know is what was the date of the first building permit?
I will, I will get to that answer while I stand here. But to that point, again, we're talking about, if that was the case, then why go through the trouble of explaining? So it doesn't say you can't, it doesn't say you can't segment, um, sorry. It says you cannot segment to avoid, and then tells you what segmenting is. And so segmenting is, you know, resulting in six or more lots above what existed 36 months prior, right? And so again, why go, you know, why go through that, right? You could, you could very easily, you know, per, per your, per your situation, you could say, as the, the building inspector did, he still says, okay, well, it's 36 months from when the last of those four new units came on, right? There's still this 36-month thing that, that rolls, right? Building inspector's decision was not, you know, it's 36 months from 2022 and you're frozen. Even the building inspector was like, no, it's, it's 36 months after the last unit came online. So again, per the building inspector, you can wait three years from, I think it was March of 25, the last two came online. And then in March of 28, we wouldn't be subject. And so there's not even this agreement that the 36 rolls. The disagreement is from where? The building inspector's determination was at the time the last unit came on. And I'm saying the, the clear language that I'm just quoting says, 36 months prior to an application. There's never been an application to develop 24 or 22 Grapevine.
It's the entire, there's a date for anything that is viewed as an entire project. So if we can believe, because this is all contiguous, it's a single project, there's a date somewhere before the current properties, buildings are done. That is the date which carries forward on any development done in perpetuity.
But that word is.
That is, that is my understanding based on the advice we have received from counsel.
But again, 36 months is written in the ordinance. In perpetuity is not written in the ordinance.
Okay. There's nothing going forward in the ordinance. It's all going back. There's no expiration date.
So anyway, our legal advisors disagree. And I'm going to ask Rocco again if he wants to, if anything, I think we understand his interpretation cleanly, but I think maybe not everybody.
Before he comes, before he comes back on, obviously, he can speak for himself. I'm not trying to speak for him. I think the other, the other point of clarification for me is, it seems that, I believe Attorney Philip's interpretation is that six is the total, including the one that exists, that existed. I think Joel's argument at a minimum is that it's one plus five before he has to do anything, before the inclusionary language would kick in. And I don't think that's the position that our attorney.
Well, it seems to me that Attorney Fivaz is saying he's never going to build on 40 billion.
No, I, I understand that, but, but I still think he's arguing that it's, it's plus the one that existed, that it's not, that the one that existed is not included in the six that kicks in the inclusionary language. And I believe that our attorney is arguing that that, that the language, the implied language of the ordinance, is that the one that exists is included in the total six. I'll let him clarify for himself.
Bernie DiFilippis?
Yes, thank you. Yes, that is my position, because 5.11.3 Sub 1 is doing something different than 5.11 Sub 3, or Point 3 Sub 2 is doing. Section 1 is saying that if the application results in six or more residential units at this development site, then the inclusionary zoning ordinance applies to it. Section 2 is saying that you cannot segment to avoid this requirement. And then it defines what segmentation is. So they're similar, but they're functionally different. Now, when the board is called on to interpret the language of the ordinance, when there's not either a, you know, given definition, or when the language is kind of providing a little bit of difficulty in interpreting it, the rule that should guide the board is it should look for a result that doesn't conflict with the stat, with the ordinance itself. You, you shouldn't determine a definition that produces an absurd result. If, if the clear language is development shall not be segmented, and then the language that follows it is a definition of what segmentation is, you can see that the words that are chose here are really important. So it shall mean one or more development applications. So that is a very broad application. It's, it's talking, it's talking about all of the potential development applications that could be filed at any point in time. But the number existing 36 months prior to an application, the use of that word "and" is also designed to have a very broad application. Now, which application that is referring to, it would, to me, it would undermine the, the clear purpose and the clear text to allow the applicant to decide which application that is referring to. And so I would say that the "an" application is a, it's, that, that language is designed to be broad, to apply to any of the different kinds of application that can begin a residential development. And it is clear that the purpose is to fix a point in time in which the units are counted, not to space them out, because that would essentially allow you to do what it's saying you cannot do.
Can I, can I just ask you to help me to understand why you would include, and I think you just concurred that that's what you have done, but in your understanding, why are you including the initial house that's there in your total count of six?
Right.
It seems that there's some language that says it's six beyond what existed.
The, the, the inclusion of the existing house is because it is part of the The, the, the inclusion of the existing houses because it is part of the development. It, the land that it was sitting on has been changed by this A and R. The lots have been changed. There's a new lot that it's sitting on. It is part of the development site. So therefore it would be counted in that number under subsection one.
So just to clarify, the application to change the dimensions of the lots really triggers the first part of determining whether that's all a residential development.
Right, because it shows you what the development is. It, it shows you that, it shows you the scope of the development so that you can see that this locus is a residential development site. And so like I was saying, the, the difference between subsection one and two is subtle because subsection one is saying that it applies to any application for residential development that results in six or more units. It doesn't talk about what was there before or not. Subsection two is specifically designed to prevent phased or segmented development that is designed to skirt the requirements of, of, of section five point eleven. It's written so it has a very broad application.
So another question for you, could you clarify, you, you had recommended when we talked that we need to clarify the determination made by the building commissioner?
Yes. So it's, if the building commissioner's interpretation of the section is incorrect, under the zoning ordinance, the board has the ability to modify his decision. And so I, I could, I could see a situation where perhaps the, um, the recognition of the phased development is what is, is what the building commissioner is focusing on, saying, no, this is, that, that interpreting it your way would allow phased development or segmented development, and that, that's not allowed. So it's essentially the same, like a correct result reached the incorrect way. But the board has the power under the zoning ordinance in, um, in, uh, section. I'm sorry, it's, it's in the appeals of the building commissioner, but to, to modify the decision, section one point six point three. Um, and so in this, a situation like this, where essentially the result is correct, but the reasoning used to reach it is incorrect, the board can, um, can take that up in its decision and modify it.
Mr. Chair, may I speak? Okay, so I, I appreciate, you know, um, what attorney DeFilippas is saying. And so, and this is not me trying to, to be rhetorical here. This is me, you know, at this point going, let's, let's just wrap this conversation. First off, to your answer, it was July, um, July, I'm so sorry. No, September twenty seventh, two thousand twenty two was the first building permit pulled on eight Orchard. But that was the question you had asked. Uh, and that's according to city records.
But, but that wasn't the first application.
That would be the first, that, that'd be the first application under zoning and or building to do anything on the lot. It might being the A and R being a subdivision control process, not, you know, governed by forty A or the building inspector's office, right? The first time we, first time we engaged, the building inspector's office and subjected itself to zoning and, and, you know, building was eight, right? And, and, but again, that's.
And just, just out of curiosity, the first time, the, the date of the A and R?
The day of the A and R was, um, back in earlier, it was still in twenty two. It was back in. I was, I was, it was right before, right? So they, they, so it was a day before. And the A and R got recorded, the A and R got voted, I guess the next day they pulled the building, right? So anyway, what I'm getting to is you go, okay, no one is arguing, I'm certainly arguing that segmentation to avoid compliance is prohibited. That's, I agree, crystal clear. Development shall not be segmented to avoid compliance. Got it? Then it tells you what segmentation is. One or more applications for the addition of one or more units that results in six or more above the number existing thirty six months prior to an application. And then, and so you go, okay, well, in that case, at some point, that thirty six months has to run. And at some point, you are no, you are, you know, you are going, okay, what was here thirty six months ago? Otherwise, for example, if you want to say it's, it's locked in, then you would just say, um, you can't create six or more units than what existed the day you first began developing. Like, there's, there's a way to write that rule. That's not what this says. This, this specifically pulls in thirty six months. And so at some point, thirty six months has to run. When thirty six months runs, right? Otherwise, again, to Mr. DeFilippas's point, you know, you have to give things plain meaning. And so if the city council, you know, what, did not intend for there to be some end to how long you have, you know, you are stuck, you know, um, applying across segmented, or they wouldn't have defined it as less than thirty six months. So the question to the board, I would say, at, at the, at the, you know, even if you're shutting me down on all my other legal arguments, at some point you have to say, okay, well, segmentation has a thirty six month component to it. And if you're thirty six months after date X, you are no longer meeting the definition of segmentation. And if you're no longer meeting the definition of segmentation, then you are no longer doing the prohibited thing. And so again, my read of it is, again, it talks about one or more applications. So it, so it contemplates that there'll be multiple applications rolling in, trying to segment. And then, again, how many units existed thirty six months prior to the application? And so again, that, that's why my argument was, hey, each time we apply, you go, how many units were existing thirty six months ago? And you gotta deal with it, right? If you're saying, we don't even agree with that, the thirty six months has to be counted from some point in time. Otherwise, they would have said, you cannot create six or more than existed the day you began. But they don't say that. They say thirty six months before you apply. And they anticipate there could be more than one application. So when does the thirty six months start and where does it run?
Months before the project started is the baseline. And it doesn't roll. I've had three legal opinions on this and they're all the same. And you disagree.
Are the opinions of the people who wrote it?
Pardon me?
Are the opinions of the people who wrote it maybe embarrassed that they didn't write it the way they meant to write it?
Who?
City legal? I mean, listen, we, we deal with this ordinance all the time, right? This, this is a relatively new ordinance that, but again, I appreciate that maybe the legal department intended to write it the way they're interpreting it. Still, where does that thirty six months run? How would I possibly do that? I would, if I, you know, let's say, let's say I had ten Orchard and I, you know, built, I converted to a, a two family, right? Are you going to say, well, and now, do we get to count it as the two? I mean, it's, it's this kind of like, you, you.
How many dwelling units? It's not buildings, not lots.
Thirty six, right, thirty six months before.
So that would, that second one would be another one. And just like you built the other duplex, you got to count all the dwelling units.
But if, but if I, if I built a second unit.
To discount any, I know you disagree.
No, no, I was not, but, but I'm asking how, so let's begin, ten Orchard, it's sitting there by itself. Nothing gets chopped up. We add a second dwelling unit. Then we can wait.
It's two, the application.
And there's two, but then we wait thirty six months and then we apply to divide the lots. It's two, our baseline?
If you, if the that not first house, however it existed.
Thirty six months prior.
It was, was part of the overall parcel.
Mm-hmm.
And the minute you divided it off, it became a new lot.
Mm-hmm.
In the, so that's got to start to count as your beginning.
So you think.
It's not what was there before, because it no longer has all the land that came with it. That's the first division. That's the first unit. Then you built four, whatever more, and you can keep going. But I just don't understand the desire to, I call it avoiding or cheating the intent of the inclusionary zoning.
So, so, so.
It's all about money.
Right, and so, and so.
That's not what this ordinance is.
But I can answer that question for you very briefly, right? Here's what we're up to. If you go to pay a fee in lieu, per our last check-in with the city, it's around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's an aggregate of the average sales. Every time a house on Winger Sheek, Eastern Point sells, it adds up into this average, right? So if you say, hey, I owe you an affordable, I'd like to pay a fee in lieu, it's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? Makes the project impossible. Flip side, you make it an affordable unit. Affordable units currently are selling in the high two hundreds. You can't build a, and it has to be comparable. That's the other problem too, is that if you go, hey, this is a single development, we want affordable, then he has to build something comparable to the one point eight million dollar units on Orchard that just sold. Four of them just sold for between like one point seven, one point nine million dollars. Affordable housing rules say this affordability has to be comparable. So you're saying you have to build a one point eight million dollar house and sell it for two hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars.
Exactly.
That is impossible.
That's what the law is.
And so if you're looking to, again, but.
But that's not before us, attorney Favaza, so.
But I'm just saying, you have a provision in here that gives you a thirty six month. You have a provision that talks about multiple, and you have the people that wrote this, maybe didn't write it the way they wanted to write it, telling you what they meant it to say, not what the clear words say.
This was long before these folks.
This was, this is, this, this was in twenty two. This, this has been updated in twenty.
The public hearing and put a hold on these, this testimony? We can come back to that.
It's an appeal of the building inspector's decision.
So there's no public testimony?
It's, it's before us. We to say that, like I said before, until he applied for a building permit, asking the building commissioner to give him an opinion, he probably never should have gave him an opinion because we wouldn't be. It wasn't a, it should have been, when he comes in to apply for the next lot, that would have been the time to appeal. I know he's trying to get out in front of it, but. So what we need to correct is one, that the decision, that the opinion needs to be corrected to state, because it's stated occupancy permit and it needs to state building. That's the, that's the main thing that was wrong with it.
I would just suggest that it, it say what the, what the ordinance says.
Right.
The first application.
And so we'll have, the city will fix for us that written uh, statement that came from the building commissioner to the. But in the meantime, we still have to decide on whether we're going to uphold the decision that the inclusionary would count. The inclusionary doesn't go away. Which would uphold his decision. Wordings wise, uh, attorney D. Phillips.
So help me clarify, just help me to make sure I understand. The inclusionary would kick in on this fifth house? Is that what's? I'm, I'm asking.
Well, that's what attorney is saying, that that constitutes the sixth dwelling.
I understand, fifth new house, I'll say, just so we know we're talking about the same house. Yes. No, I'm, I'm asking.
Even if you throw that away, what about the seventh one? He's arguing, no, it don't.
Yeah, it's just a different, to me, it's just a different argument. So for me, for me personally, it's a different argument.
Whether this is the fifth or sixth, what about the next one?
It's not before us, I don't think.
Well, but his argument is, and his opinion was requested that, that the thirty six month doesn't go from the beginning of the project. That's his argument. And that's what it totally wants you not to do. Allow people to kick the can down the road until they don't have to build the affordable unit.
So again.
And going in, they all know that they're going to have to lose money on a unit because this is decided sometime ago that we were going to have an inclusionary zoning.
So I think we all have to decide whether we like that or not.
Yeah.
I don't, for me, that's.
And just, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, in defense of my client, again, this is, this is the problem with rotating staff. This was discussed in twenty two with Bill Sanborn, and his read of it was my read of it. Unfortunately, he's not here, so we went to check to make sure Mr. Vicari's read of it was the same as Bill Sanborn's read of it. It's not. So this was not, you know, again, this is not like we, we went into this blind. We had this conversation in two thousand twenty two and got the answer that I am providing you was the argument that the previous building inspector gave us as far as how that thirty six months is counted and how we could do this when we found out that we couldn't run the utilities, how we could do this to avoid it being, you know, um, triggering inclusionary. So that's again, now that it's binding, I want to, before he's the building inspector, I respect his opinion. I just want to let you know this was not done willy nilly or cavalierly. We spoke to the then building inspector and got a hundred and eighty degree different.
So, and I, I believe you, and I think that's, I think that's fair representation of what you just said. The reality of that, though, is that he could have issued that building permit, you could have gotten started. Somebody could have appealed that and we would have been here three years ago, right? You know, instead of now. So I, that doesn't, I, I mean, I think that's fair.
That's going to be persuasive, I just made it clear.
Your frustration is fair. I would be frustrated if I was you, you know, if that was the case. That doesn't, that doesn't mandate that we have to do anything, that's all, to support that.
Understood.
Sorry, I'm just still going back. Um, Joel, attorney Favaza is appealing the decision of the building inspector. And that, I just, sorry, I haven't read it here in a while. I, I want to be really clear what that appeal is, because that's what's, for me, that's what's before me. And that's all I'm voting on today, if I have to vote on it today.
Attorney D. Phillips?
Well, I mean, my understanding of the application before the board is that, uh, attorney Favaza asked the building commissioner how to interpret this section and was given an interpretation. I understand the applicant disagrees with that interpretation. And so I, the question before the board essentially is, is this a single development or not? And how does the thirty six month, um, segmentation provision in subsection or in five point eleven point three sub two apply to future development? Because if, if I understand correctly, and I haven't seen the email, which, um, I think the board can kind of see that typically when, uh, there's a request for a zoning interpretation, there's a, it's a, it's more, it's not really an informal document. It's not in a conversation or, or something like that, because that's what the board has to consider when they're deciding whether or not the building commissioner decided it correctly or interpreted it correctly. So from what I understand, the thrust of the request was to, uh, something about guide the future of development at the pro, project. There's, it's in the application. I'm, I apologize, I'm losing the exact phrase, but the two, the two issues are, is it a single development? And then how does, uh, the thirty six month rule apply?
Well, you feel it is a, you feel it is a single development and you feel the thirty six month stats, thirty six months previous to the first application?
Yeah, yes, I believe that the plain language of the ordinance demonstrates that this is a single development. And I believe that the building commissioner's interpretation of subsection two is incorrect in that it, um, it views it as a thirty six month rolling period. But I think the plain text of the ordinance, uh, is a thirty six month period that looks backwards and is fixed. And I think that that is clear from the plain language and from the reasonable interpretation guided by the clear, the clearer text and the clear purposes stated in the preamble.
So let me run this up the flagpole. We vote on three separate motions, which A is, um, is this a single project? Secondly, define the lookback period, affirm that. And thirdly, this vote on whether it's, you know, this rolling thing that, um, attorney Favaza has this find.
See, that's not what's before us. What's before us is whether we support the building commissioner's decision or change it.
Right, and I think the board can say, do we uphold the commissioner's decision or overturn it? Or do we uphold it but for a different reason? And that would be the modification that I mentioned earlier.
All right. Really like to have a copy of the letter in front of me before I make this motion. I looked at it online, but.
You have, it's in the packet.
Well, I, I viewed this online and watched the tape of the previous thing because I was in Spain. I would like to make a motion in respect of the letter from Robert Vicari, building commissioner, responding to questions from Joel Favaza, Seaside Legal Solutions, one twenty three Main Street, Los Termas, pertaining to six, eight and ten Orchard Road and twenty two dash twenty four Grapevine Road. We concur with the statement that project at the address is a single project. We do not concur with that you will need to wait thirty six months or follow inclusionary housing requirements. There is no thirty six month waiting period. The thirty six months applies to the date when the A and R was done going forward. And the number of developed unit, units is marked at that fixed point and does not change.
Can you clarify if it's six total or six more?
That it, that it's a single project, but, and set the date, concurring with setting that date for determining things, but not. concurring with setting that date for determining things, but not agreeing with the thirty six month waiting period. There is no thirty six month waiting period. It's not in the ordinance. If no one seconds by motion, then we can go back and have another.
I just want to do the right.
So this is what we disagree with.
That's not a waiting.
It may be helpful if I if I read the text of the of the ordinance for the board to to guide them in making a motion. So under GZO section one point six point three, it says in acting on an appeal, the zoning board of appeals may modify the order or decision of the inspector of buildings and impose such conditions, safeguards and limitations that it deems necessary. So I would think that the essentially the board is modifying the decision.
Do you like me to withdraw and try and remake the motion?
Yeah, let's.
I would like to withdraw my previous motion.
Yeah, it hasn't been seconded, so you can make a new one.
Like to make a motion in response to the letter by the building commissioner, Robert Vicari of a question asked by Joel Favaza, Seaside Legal Solutions, one twenty three Main Street, Gloucester, Mass pertaining to six, eight and ten Orchard Road and twenty two through twenty four Grapevine Road. That we concur with the initial statement that this is a single project. Period. There the rest of the statement about a waiting period, we disagree with. There is no waiting period. Period. The thirty six months pertains to setting the the starting point. So I say that last thing is a clarification.
Hey, motion's been made.
They just say the back end of that motion one more time, just for me.
How far back do you want me to go?
Just the last, almost the last statement about the thirty six month waiting period. So there is no waiting.
There is no thirty six month waiting period. So the.
But then you said something about the thirty six months.
Thirty six months.
The thirty six month establishes the starting point for determining the base. The establishes the baseline for counting units. And that is all. And it is for as long as those lots would be considered a single development, that is the starting point.
So I'm going to second it so we can talk about it. Is that all right? I'll second the motion.
What's been made and seconded, discussion.
So are we? Have we just left out inadvertently to talk about numbers of buildings? Or have we? Is it inadvertent or is it on purpose that we're not talking about one plus six triggers? Or six triggers by itself? In other words, that the house that was there became part of the, I believe that's Attorney Philppus's argument, that that house became part of the development and that house plus five more equals the six. So we didn't state that. And for me personally, if we don't need to state that, I'm happy to leave it out of this because we're just responding to an appeal to the building inspector. So if it doesn't need to be in there, I'm happy to leave it out there because it's not going to get settled by us probably at this moment anyway. So if we don't need to address it, I would like to not address it. That's my opinion.
My as the they grew up that motion. Make or of the motion, it is deliberately ignored because it is not mentioned
Yep.
in this letter.
Let's do our duty, which is responding to the letter.
I would love to know the answer to that question, but it is not.
So what your motion is saying, we're going to we're upholding the decision with modifications. And we're we're agreeing with his interpretation that it is one project. And we're saying we're agreeing with our counsel's advice, which is where we're modifying is that the thirty six months is previous to the first application for the development.
Yes. And if I was to put it in as simple terms as possible, the about the first twelve words on the first line of this letter are operable and the rest is stricken.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I think I'm good with that.
So we have a motion before the board's been made and seconded. Uphold the decision of the building commissioner with regard to the treating this application as a single project. And we're modifying his decision with regard to what the thirty six months means. Roll call.
So to hold on just a second. So we're voting on the appeal.
And modification.
Yes.
We can do both.
I I know that, but so. So we're denying the appeal, so a no vote is a positive vote. And that's a question.
You may have a good point, but I didn't make the motion with in that form. I made the motion in the form of.
You made it a positive motion.
Yeah. Reviewing the the letter, what parts of the letter we were supporting and what parts we weren't.
What's before us is appeal is an appeal.
Right.
That's what we have to address.
Oh, we can do two things. We can modify, let's have a motion to modify the decision of the building commissioner. And then we'll have a motion on the appeal.
Okay, I'd I'd like to withdraw my motion again.
Okay. Somebody want to make? Yeah, make the motion about.
That's a good motion for for the that's a good motion for the letter, isn't it? What you just said.
It is, but you can't bring up another motion with one in in the in the hopper.
We got to modify the.
I would like to propose that we deny the appeal of the letter.
Modify the decision, the opinion first, then you take up the appeal.
Yes.
Then then the motion that I.
Motion is on modify. Okay. The modification of the decision of the building commissioner is a positive motion. And then we'll take take up a a motion to uphold the appeal, but sounding like it may get denied.
So essentially, I mean, it's this it's very similar to the motion that was just made that except we're addressing it to the building inspector's letter.
One's positive, one's negative.
Yes, so.
They can't be both.
So make a motion to approve the billion inspectors' letter with modification that we concur that there is one project. We don't believe there is a waiting period. We want that corrected. And the thirty the thirty six months establishes a baseline for counting units. Need more than that or is that enough?
Oh, motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. We're on roll call vote on modifying the decision.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to accept the appeal submitted of the building commissioner's decision. Well, it's it's a positive motion and we vote it down. So it's going to be, we have to vote on the application, which is appeal of the decision. So the motion will be on the on the appeal of the building commissioner's decision to uphold the appeal.
May I suggest on the building commissioner's decision as modified?
All right.
On the building commissioner's decision as modified by the previous vote.
Okay, yep.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Positive motion.
To to consider the appeal.
The motion to approve the appeal.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the appeal.
Based on the.
Based on the modification of the building inspector's decision concerning the project at six, eight and ten Orchard Road and twenty two, twenty four Grapevine Road.
Second.
Very good.
Made and seconded. We're going to have a roll call vote. Positive vote. Upholds the appeal and negative vote denies the appeal. Roll call.
Ms. Norton?
No vote.
No.
Mr. Nyman?
No.
Mr. Canavo?
No, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Parisi?
No.
Heard a decision.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, folks, we're moving on to our regular.
Good evening, everyone.
We don't usually take this long.
Thank you, Rocko.
Our first application of Adam Barnes for a special permit in a variance to place a food trailer at thirty three Rockport Road. Remind everybody, you give your name and address for the record, whether you're speaking or if you wish to public testimony.
Good evening. My name's Adam Barnes. This is my wife Reagan and we live at one Becker Lane here in Gloucester. As already stated, we are requesting a special permit to have an extended stay at thirty three Rockport Road, also like on the property of the KPN Motor Inn. Uh, the owner whom is right over here, Brad Pierce, to lend support for us. A little bit, little, little bit of information that you might need is I can understand why there might be a little bit concerns because a lot of times the food trucks have generators, but we actually electrically connected to the building through a cable. So it doesn't, there's no generator noise or loud sounds. We have a new hood system that's actually quieter than most in window air conditioning units. We have an ancil system that we just installed for safety. We provide a service for not only the guests of the hotel, but the the visitors and tourists and citizens of Gloucester and our beaches. A lot of people, the closest place for anyone to get any food is three tenths of a mile at that the the dairy made and the surfside pizza subs. And a lot of times we actually recommend some of our guests that come to our window to go down there because of wider selection of food if they're they want more than just what we have. We don't really do any food preparation there except for cutting some fruits and vegetables. So there's not a mess. We have trash barrels that the anyone who goes to the beach can utilize and which we dispose of. So we provide something for trash receptacles, we provide food, quick easy option for families who don't want to take their kids down the street. And and all we're asking to do is be able to stay through the set through the end of September. Doesn't necessarily mean we'll be there till the end of September, but that option. And more than happy to answer any questions that you might have for us.
What would the hours be?
The hours operations would be from seven AM to five PM. Maybe stay open a little late on a couple of days for special occasions. Occasionally, every year KPN Motor Inn has a beach party, so we might stay a little bit later for like ice cream or other food options that someone might have. That's the only maybe stay open a little bit later if the beaches are still very crowded and people are still lining up. But it's a we already know there's a hard stop at eight o'clock if we happen for whatever reason to be open up that late.
Questions at this time?
I don't know what the city ordinance are, but seven AM seems like an early start. There are residents around there. Seven AM?
Seven AM. Considering like, well, again, it's no generator, so it's not creating any noise. And you have a lot of restaurants within residential areas right in Gloucester, downtown Gloucester.
They don't open at seven AM.
All the breakfast places. Yeah, they're all open five. Okay, why don't we see if what the public thinks? You can sit down for a sec. Is there anyone in the audience that wish to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward and don't don't forget name and address for us. If you're on Zoom, you can hit your raise hand button to come in and we'll recognize you. Go ahead.
My name is Brad Pierce. I live at one A Becker Lane in Gloucester. I'm also part owner of the KPN Motor Inn at thirty three Rockport Road. They open up at seven in the morning. And it's mostly the neighbors that take advantage of that. My office doesn't open up until seven thirty and we have donuts and coffee in there, but the guests love the facility. They they've got a lot of money invested in this facility. It's clean. It's fantastic. They offer a lot to the neighbors, the guests. And I don't know what else to say in favor of it. It's just very well run. It's clean and I and there's no noise involved and the neighbors love it. So if you have any questions for me, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to answer them, so.
Well, we did received your letter of support and we also received one other letter of support earlier today. So no, that's good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Done, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone opposed? One here, opposition. Will be no need for rebuttal discussion by the board?
Yeah, so there's no no neighborhood opposition.
Which really I expected two of our former members would be.
Ah ha, that's right. I forgot they're right there. Yeah, so no neighborhood opposition and Brad owns the the motor in for crying out loud. The guy's going to cause any trouble. I think Brad's going to get after him and stop that. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, he runs.
Not that you, not that I think you will cause trouble, but he's vested.
Runs a good operation.
Yeah, no, he's vested, you know, so you know. I think it's great.
While you're looking at those, I just have a question for the applicants. What what prior experience do you have with running the food trucks?
Food trucks, I don't have really any prior experience. I'm the property manager over at Brewsport, so I'm very familiar with back of the house operations, including all. We're both serve safe manager certified as long as as well as like the allergens and everything like that. She runs the front of the house at the Choke Bridge Pub. So as far as hospitality and cooking and preparation and customer service, we're you kind of have a together, we have it covered both sides. As far as cooking experience, I've been cooking since I was six.
I'm more concerned as a former small businesswoman, I was more concerned with like your financial acumen.
Okay, so our standard for this is, want to review that?
Yeah, our standard for this is under one point eight point three and will consider factors including social, economic and community needs that seem to be served by by this use, the traffic flow and safety seems to be addressed. Adequate utilities and other public services, you've anticipated that. Neighborhood character and social structure, qualities of the natural environment, potential fiscal impact, and I don't think it's applicable flooding vulnerability. So I think on those factors, I certainly feel comfortable.
Yeah, and I think the I think the ordinance, I think you said when we did the one down on Rogers Street, so what six months or whatever, this it's some set timeframe, right? So I don't think we even need to set a time. The weather is going to set the timeframe anyway. People are going to go home.
That was a temporary application.
This is not.
That was different. This is a permanent.
Ah ha, okay.
Now, they won't choose to be there in January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think.
You don't know, we're tough.
I don't want to set any time limit or.
I agree.
But it's under two, three, six, three, which is temporary. So do you?
The only reason I had put it under that was because I know he's not going to be there after October. The hotel closes, correct? Are you open all year? He told me he was going to be done come September.
Yeah, we're.
So.
Don't want to have to come back again.
So yeah, we could change that then and go to the two point three seven and have it as a.
it as a accessory to the use.
That's reuse to the motel.
To the motel.
Same standard.
Two point three seven, same standard.
Same standard.
So that way you'll be able to, you won't have to come back, and I don't want you to have to reapply every year.
No, I appreciate that.
You're making a big investment, so. All right, we'll have a motion, then.
Ken, or you can, doesn't matter to me.
With regard to the application of Adam Barnes for a special permit under two point three point seven to place a food trailer at thirty-three Rockport Road, I move approval.
Second, based upon Lauren's review of one point eight point three.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Cannavo?
Go, Peter.
Mr. Cannavo? Mr. Prezi?
Yes. Heard our decision's favorable. We will be putting a decision together for you to get you, there's some rules to follow for filing and all that, and good luck.
I just have one question. Due to the very limited timeframe that we have to operate, wasn't sure if there's possibility we could forego the word, bypass the.
So the same thing that applied from the last one. You put the trailer down on his property. You put it down at your own risk. If someone appeals, the trailer needs to be removed.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good luck again.
All right, thank you.
Lauren's gonna write that. Okay, our next application is Sandra and Angelo Rallo for special permit variance to convert a two-family at twelve Andrews Court.
Mr. Chairman, Sandra Rallo, my husband Angelo, we live at twelve Andrews Court.
You need to get really close, because it won't record.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Nice and loud.
Sandra Rallo and Angelo, my husband Angelo Rallo, we live at twelve Andrews Court, and we're seeking permission to convert our single-family home to a two-family home, and also looking for a backyard variance. We're looking to add on so that my daughter can have a place to live in Gloucester. Cost of housing is very high, and we wanted to stay here. And we've also spoken with our neighbors, the ones that directly about our property, and all are in favor for us to add on. It'll be in addition on the backside of our garage, so it's not really even noticeable. And it is an eighteen and a half by thirty-four. We will use the second story of our garage also, so it does, it is greater than what you could consider an ADU, so it would be a second family.
It's a big house you got there.
Herner Siberian Husky.
Okay, so the only real issue is the rear yard going to ten feet from the back, which is considerably above anything below it. Slopes drastically down to Essex Town.
Right, yeah.
Okay?
I was just trying to remember from visiting the site how close the building is behind theirs, between Essex Street.
On Essex way down.
It's way down on this, it's on Essex, so it's.
It's on Essex, yeah, you clearly would go look over everything, and they do have a right-of-way down to Essex Town, too, so it pushes that other house. Shouldn't be, I don't see as a big issue. Okay, any, no other questions? Why don't we see if anyone in the public wishes to speak? Anyone in favor of the application? Please come forward, anyone in favor? If you're online, you hit your raise hand button. I see no one, anyone in opposition? Or any opposition to the project? Please come forward. Seeing none, close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Application of Sandra and Angelo Rallo for a special permit, convert from one to two into variance. Yeah, so the special permit is to convert.
Convert one to two with exterior changes.
With exterior changes and a variance for rear yard setback.
Of ten feet.
Of ten feet. I think it's a good project. Next house is far away. I'd move approval of the special permit and also approval of the variance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for a special permit to convert from one to two with exterior changes and a variance for rear yard setback. Mike Nyman in line. Roll call vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Prezi?
Vote yes for the reasons given. You've heard our decision's favorable. We'll get, I'll write the decision, we'll get that out to you as soon as we can with instructions.
Thank you.
Good luck. Now, Peter had to hop off, but we still have a corner. Oh, good, yeah. Okay, our next application of Robert A. Burns trustee for special permit variance to add a second floor to the residence at seven Bayberry Lane, please represented by attorney Shidi.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Wilhelmina Shidi, seventy-six Main Street, Rockport. On behalf of Robert Burns trustee of seven Bayberry Lane, we are seeking a special permit under sections one point nine, two point four three, and two point four four B of the GZO for the alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. The purpose of this petition is to enable the petitioner to replace and add a porch roof over an existing deck and to replace the existing garage in the exact same size, to add a second floor addition to that garage, and to cantilever the front of the second floor of the garage with all improvements adding a total of ninety-one square feet in lot coverage. And Ellen Levine with Treehouse Design is here with me. If you would allow her to share her screen, she can put up the plans.
So is your, is your special permit just for the increase in the non-conforming lot area?
The special permit is for the increase in building lot coverage.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah.
The minimus at best, right?
Yes, very small.
Okay, let's not waste a whole lot of time.
No.
No. Sorry. There's not much to this application.
Here are the plans. The plans are up, and you can see the area of the garage, and the deck is adjacent to it, so it's on the same side of the structure. There would be no encroachments into setbacks as a result of this project. The existing house is part of the subdivision in the private end of Winger chic beach, approved in nineteen fifty-three, and it falls under the superseding setback distances for certain streets in the R twenty residential district under appendix to section three point two of the GZO. As such, the GZO requires twenty thousand square feet of land, twenty-five percent lot coverage, eighty feet of frontage, one hundred feet of width, twenty feet each for the front and rear setbacks, and ten feet for the side setbacks. The site plan, the floor plans and elevation plans are by Treehouse Design, and they are dated May eighth, twenty twenty-five. The petitioner's property is deficient in that it contains twelve thousand thirty-two square feet of lot area, a lot width of ninety-four feet, and building coverage of twenty-six percent. A special permit was granted by this board in two thousand twelve for a building height of thirty-five feet for the main structure. In all other respects, the petitioner's property conforms to the GZO requirements. The design for the project includes replacing the existing garage in the exact same size, adding a second floor addition to the garage, which would cantilever in the front by four feet. Also, the proposed porch is to be rebuilt in the same location as the existing deck and covered with a porch roof. These improvements would add a total of ninety-one square feet, resulting in an increase in lot coverage by one-half of one percent, increasing lot coverage from the current twenty-six percent to twenty-six point five percent. The petitioner is proposing very modest additions to their home. In conclusion, the proposal is consistent with the neighborhood character and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing residents. Since the property will remain a single-family home with no increase in bedrooms, there is no impairment of utilities or other adverse impacts caused by the alteration, and the proposed structure is in harmony with the general purpose intent of the zoning bylaw. I may add that the Conservation Commission has already issued a notice of intent for the project. The Sanitarium has no problem approving a building permit for this as well. There's a deed restriction limiting the number of bedrooms in this property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions up front? We've looked at public testimony, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? I think the, we didn't really need any more clarity on the design. It was fairly obvious over the garage, it's kind of tucked in on the right side and that porch, so. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward or raise your hand. Can we take down that plan? Because I can't see the public, unfortunately. I don't know why. Thank you. Anyone in favor? Hearing none, anyone in opposition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the plan? On, no need for rebuttal. Discussion or motion?
I don't want to make a motion, or you can, I just want to make sure I say it correctly. Oh, sorry.
So this yellow line is the VE zone, so we're barely, you know, it's just skirting the edge.
The application is alter and expand, and also a lot coverage increase of one point five percent.
Well, I'm just, you know.
We're out of the.
We're not, the change is not in the VE zone.
That's correct.
Whereas the previous time we discussed VE zones, the change was, and therefore could not be done. So because this squeaks in, it is not an issue.
Right.
It's just the lot coverage, which is already exceeded by.
It's already one over, it's gonna be one, one and a half. Okay, so.
Lost again exactly what you need.
A special permit to alter the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and special permit for building lot coverage increase.
You can make that if you want, or you can go.
The motion on the property at seven Bayberry Lane, owned by Robert A. Burns, trustee of the Robert A. Burns Qualified Personal Residence Trust, for a special permit to alter, expand a non-conforming property under section one point nine, and we find that, that these changes are compatible with the interests of the city and the neighborhood, and including the special permit for the increase in lot coverage as described.
Motion made and seconded on the application. As stated, roll call vote, because on a permit, we should vote, so everybody has a chance to speak.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Prezi?
Else vote yes, I think it's a minimal amount and fits in with the criteria. Heard our decision, we'd appreciate a draft.
Decision from you?
Okay, next application is Barbara J. Scopa trustee for special permit of variance to replace a single-family home at ten Samuel Riggs Circle.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Wilhelmina Shidi, seventy-six Main Street, Rockport, representing Barbara J. Scopa trustee of Sam, ten Samuel Riggs Circle. The relief that we are requesting, and we have the architect here, Robert Gulla, he has the paper drawings, you have the paper drawings, we have some difficulty, you know, operating this, so if need be, he has a stick that we could maybe try to.
I think we are okay with that.
Okay. The special permits that we request, well, we're requesting special permits for the alteration, extension, demolition, and replacement of the pre-existing non-conforming structure under sections one point nine, two point four three, and two point four five of the GZO. We're also looking for variances for lot size, front yard setback, right yard setback, and lot coverage under section two point four point five D, and sections one point seven and three point two one of the GZO, and a variance for the increased lot coverage of all structures within the AE zone to exceed ten percent in the AE flood zone under section five point five point one seven of the GZO. The purpose of the petition is to enable the petitioner to demolish the existing original nineteen fifty's single-family home abutting the Mill River and to replace it with a new single-family home as shown on the plans. The new home has been lifted approximately nine feet and has been designed to withstand flood surge. The existing structure has been determined to require improvements for flood safety and updated code requirements. The new home would be energy efficient with modern utilities and building specifications. The five thousand five hundred and fifty square foot lot is presently non-conforming in size in the R ten zone, which requires ten thousand square feet. The existing structure is also non-conforming for front yard setback at fifteen point seven feet, where twenty feet is required, and the right side's, right yard setback at four point eight feet, where ten feet is required. The remaining dimensional requirements are conforming, and the property is also currently conforming as to lot coverage with a total of twenty-three point eight percent, where thirty percent lot coverage is allowed. The height of the present structure is twenty-two point eight feet. The new structure.
Tell me the percentage of lot coverage again, please.
Uh, right now, twenty-three point eight.
Yep, and you're going to.
We're going to thirty-nine point seven. So the new structure would decrease the front yard setback to five feet, and the right-side yard setback to four point four feet, and lot coverage, again, would increase to thirty-nine point seven percent. All other dimensional requirements will be conforming. The left-side yard will be seventeen point nine feet with a twenty-seven-foot rear yard setback. The height of the proposed structure is twenty-seven point nine feet. The size of the home will increase modestly from thirteen hundred square feet to fifteen hundred square feet. Plans that were submitted, a site plan by Gateway Consultants dated May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and the floor and elevation plans by Robert Gulla Architecture dated February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Go back again, so currently thirteen hundred square feet is what you said?
That's what I said, yeah.
Fifteen hundred.
To fifteen.
So why such an increase in lot coverage then?
It's a very small lot. I'm sure, I think we included maybe decks and porches.
Okay, so that's not in what you're just saying?
Yes.
You just answered my question, great.
Mm-hmm. So a special permit pursuant to GZO one point nine and two point four point three for the reconstruction and extension of the non-conforming structure should be issued to the applicant, because the proposed project is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure, and it will provide significant improvement on off-street parking with a proposed garage space on this narrow street. The proposal is consistent with the neighborhood character, since the property will remain a single-family home, there is no impairment of utilities or other adverse impacts caused by the alteration. The proposed structure is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. The project will also meet the requirements of GZO two point four point five, as the replacement structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Also, as required by GZO two point four point five, the demolition of the existing structure will not take place unless and until the project is approved by the board. The construction of the new structure will follow the demolition of the existing structure as expeditiously as practicable. Pursuant to GZO section one point seven point two, variances may be granted by the written determination of the Zoning Board of Appeals that. that literal enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner, financial or otherwise, and said hardship arises from circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of the land, or the structures in question, which circumstances particularly affect such land and/or structures but which do not generally affect the zoning district in which they are located. And desired release may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this ordinance. In this circumstance, the irregular shape of the site and with it being undersized and in close proximity to Mill River creates a substantial hardship to the petitioner. Moving the structure away from the water and positioning it to withstand flood surge on this small lot will increase already established non-conformities. Desirable relief may be granted for the proposed structure without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the ordinance. The Gloucester Conservation Commission has determined that the entire site is located in the AE flood zone, and therefore a variance pursuant to Section 5.5.17 of the GZO will be required as the increase in lot coverage will exceed 10% of the AE zone. A variance should be issued to expand the existing footprint in the AE zone. Good insufficient cause and exceptional non-financial hardship exists as a new home will be energy efficient with modern utilities and building specifications. The new home, as I said, has been lifted approximately nine feet and has been designed to withstand flood surge. The variance will not result in additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, or fraud of the public, and the variance is the minimum action necessary to afford relief. I think that is it for me.
Yep.
Are there any questions of the architect who's here or myself?
I just want to be clear again on what you're asking for. Alter, expand, demo, 1.9, 2.3, 2.4.3, obviously with 2.4.5.
Yes.
Tearing it down. And then a variance 5.5.17. That's the extent of what you're asking for.
Uh, no, also variances for lot size, front yard setback, right yard setback, and lot coverage.
Why do you need, you're already in those setbacks. Why do you?
We are already, but when you demolish Section 1.7, I believe, when you demolish a property and you rebuild, you have to meet dimensional.
Not under one family.
No, definitely not.
I think under 1.7, uh, 2.4.5 then, if you just take a look at that, I think.
I mean, you, you already, uh.
We already, we're not, we're not creating any new non-conformities, but.
I don't ever remember giving variances like that.
No.
Special permit.
Under one and two family.
Okay, all right, that's the way I.
That's why I was asking. You went, you went on about the variances and then, then you, you know, we're talking about being in flood zone and stuff like that, and I had a feeling.
It would be, it would be lot coverage, front yard setback.
So lot coverage, yes, but not lot size though, right?
What's that?
It's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, right?
But the way I read it.
Increase the coverage to 39.
When you demolish.
But not lot size.
Right.
No, no, not lot size.
Okay.
Need a variance for that.
Okay, all right.
So I would say front yard coverage, a variance in the AE zone.
Say it again slowly. So we have, we have special permit. We already talked about that.
Alter, expand.
2.4.5.
There's front yard setback.
It's already in the front and it's already.
I don't think it is.
It is. It is right now.
It's in the 20, it's 15.7.
15.7.
27, and then whatever it was, and you're increasing it to only 4.4.
But in the AE, we need the under 7.
We need the sep, yeah, the separate variance for that.
Okay, so let's go back over it one more time, just so that we give you what you need if we approve it. So.
Just a question on that, because it says 5.5.7.
1.7.
But it's 1.7, not.
1.7, 5.5.17.
So you need special permit.
Special permit under 1.9 and 2.4.3 and 2.4.5.
Then you need variance for lot coverage.
Variance for.
Going from 23 point something to.
We are, yes, mm-hmm.
And then you need a variance for 5.5.17 because you're in the flood zone.
Okay. The way I had read that.
I think that's all you need.
I think it was 2.4.5, that unless approved by a variance by the board when you demolish a structure. No, okay, all right.
I just don't ever remember giving variances with that special permit.
Okay.
Already in setbacks.
We are, and we're not creating any new. Except for lot coverage.
Okay, we'll open up the public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, any opposition to the application? Here at, on Zoom, you have to hit your raise hand button, or if you hear, come up to the podium. Any opposition? Seeing none, closed public testimony. Everybody good, or we need a moment? Yeah, it'd be nice.
Uh, I, I can make a motion if you want. Do you have to tell, I don't know if you told us, do you have to tell us the percentage?
I did.
The 10%?
Yep, uh, so we're currently at 23.8 and we're increasing to 39.7.
Oh, but you said your, your cover, your increase in lot coverage over the 10%.
Yes, we are.
So that's, that's all I need to know.
Okay.
That's what you just said to me. Okay. Okay. Application of Barbara J. Scopa, trustee for special, I'm just going to read this and then I'll go into it a little bit more. Special permit and variance to replace a single-family home at 10 Samuel Riggs Circle. So what we agreed to, I move approval of special permit to alter, extend, demo the existing structure via 1.9, 2.4.3, and then expeditiously tear down and rebuild via 2.4.5, and then a variance for lot coverage from the existing to 39.7. I think that is warranted, given the shape and topography of that lot, the undersized lot, and then variance for 5.5.17 to increase lot coverage over the 10% given the, that the whole lot just about is in the flood zone. I move approval of the special permit and both the variances.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Nyman?
Uh, yes on the special permit and yes on the two variances.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Pre, Mr. Prezi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Decision favorable? Thank you.
Thank you.
Last hearing of the evening. Took us forever, then 10 minutes to do the rest.
Wow, nice to see you.
Last hearing is the application of Angus Salvador and Elena Marty Ventosa for a special permit of variance to change lot size at 46 Castleview Drive. Okay. The applic, go ahead.
You don't have to answer, but I just have a question.
Yes.
Sort of looking at the app, it took me a while to understand, you know, I sort of dove into it. So I probably understand what's going on now. Uh, you'll tell me, but I didn't understand why you did just trade some pieces of land. That just seemed like that would be fairly simple to me.
Essentially, that, that's what's happening. There is a transfer here going on, so.
Anyway, you go ahead. I just was, I'm just sort of curious. I looked at what was going on and I just thought, just chop one there and chop one there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Burke. I represent Angus Salvador Bravo and Elena Marty Ventosa. They reside at 46 Castleview Drive. They are.
Can you, um.
Get closer to them.
Can you speak into the mic closer because recording won't get it.
Yes, and for the record, Attorney William Heaney is here. He is representing Dr. Kenneth Branton, who is the owner of 44 Castleview Drive. He's also going to share the, the screen here so that we can put up the.
Can you just state your address?
My address is, uh, One Arnold Terrace, Burlington, Massachusetts. And by way of background, this does involve a lawsuit, and it's about the boundary between 44 and 46 Castleview Drive. Parties have come to an understanding which involves the transfer of. Attorney Heaney could share his screen, but it, I have a, have, I don't know.
We have it in front of us.
The plan which is, uh, was filed with the, the application. It shows a small strip of land in the upper, the upper left-hand corner of 46 Castleview Drive, which is the, uh, the subject land that will be transferred to 44.
Just for clarity, so, trying to remember, 46 was the one on the right, correct?
Yes, that, that's right.
And who's given who?
46.
So 46 is the applicant.
Transferring.
To 44.
This plot that is, uh, that is delineated here.
Pink triangle.
To 44, which is on the left-hand side of.
Okay.
Of your, uh.
Yep.
But, but it's, looking at it from Castleview Drive, it's the, it's in the upper left-hand corner of, uh, of 46 Castleview Drive. And we are seeking, as, as a member indicated, a, a variance for reduction in the lot area, specifically this red, this red area which Attorney Heaney is putting up on the, on the screen here is 676 square feet. All right, and that will be the, and we are seeking, again, a reduction of the lot area pursuant to Section 3.1.3 of the Gloucester zoning ordinance. And we believe we have met the, the statutory criteria for a variance, specifically the hardship here is the shape and topography of the lot. Specifically, there's ledge on the lot, 46 Castleview Drive. And also, if you look at the shape, you can see that it is a rather odd or unique shaped lot. And so the relief that we are seeking here that would be granted without detriment to the public good and without derogating from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. I, I did have, and I don't know whether some of the neighbors have, uh, have submitted letters, but I have letters here if the board would like to see those.
They submitted them to us?
They didn't get in the talk.
Oh.
I read it somewhere. Did you give a person an email? Yeah, I read it.
Okay, no problem.
Would you like me to?
Yeah, if you have those, we can put on the record. Are these all? Same ones?
Yeah, they're. They're mostly neighbors, 30, 31 Castleview Drive. There was 50 Castleview Drive, 28 Castleview Drive, 18, I think it's Sea, Sea Valley. But there were many, many supporters in favor of the, the variance. And so, again, we're seeking a variance for 676 square feet, which is in conformance with the plan that was submitted with the application dated July 31st, 2024, and revised on May 27th, 2025. If you have any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer them.
I, I think my question is, I feel like you're asking us to help you do something. I don't feel like you'd really explain to us why you're asking for our help.
There is a, currently pending a lawsuit, and we're trying to resolve that lawsuit. We've entered into an agreement. And so as a result of that agreement, the transfer of this property, we're seeking a reduction in 46 Castleview Drive so that it's no longer non-conforming, right? And so we can, we can then move forward with an A and R and transfer that property, that small strip of land to, to 44 Castleview Drive.
Okay, I, I understand what was going on. And 44 is in agreement. I, I only thing I want to point out, I'd be remiss if I didn't, but right now you fall compliant under the superseding subdivision sizes of 20,000 foot. You're going to take your lot down to 19, 425. So you will be losing your one and two-family exemption for future variance because this is self-inflicted. And I mean, I, I know it's the solution is going to work for you, and if you're never going to do anything else there, that's okay. But that, that's just the one thing that stood out to me is you're, you're giving up a fair amount.
And this is the, the agreement the parties have, have entered into, Mr. Chairman.
Just out of curiosity, this has nothing to do with the development like right behind the next street over, like right behind the property?
The, the development behind.
Yeah, there's new, new houses going.
Yeah, this has nothing to do.
Nothing to do with it. There's no exchange or anything. Yeah, this is just a neighborhood dispute, I think, being resolved. Okay, any other questions? Good? Take public testimony. Is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor, please come forward or raise your hand. Can we take that down? Sure. You got to get into the mic or we can't, we won't hear.
So I'm, I'm here to speak in favor. I'm Bill Heaney. I represent Dr. Branton at 44 Castleview Drive. My address is 86 Dodge Street in Beverly. I just, uh, I'm here in support of it. I just want to just kind of clear up a couple of tight items and really appreciate you guys being a part of a solution here tonight, hopefully. Our application, as it was submitted, has since been corrected, the, the lot size, the, uh, inflection, the parcel land has gone from 612 square feet on the application to 676 square feet. The application was done prior to Eric Benson doing his surveying. So just for clarifications, we'd like to amend that to make sure we have the proper square footage in there, as well as we are seeking for relief for both lot area and the.
When you, when you guys write us a draft decision, you can make sure that's right.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're on the record with it.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? No? Anyone in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Nobody online? No opposition. We'll close public testimony.
Motion. Can you take down the sharing, please?
Yeah, can you unsheer? Thanks.
Make a motion to approve the application of Angus Salvador Bravo and Elena Marty Ventosa of 46 Castleview Drive for a variance under Section 1.7 and 3.1.3 to change the configuration of the lot as provided in the application to reduce it as described.
Second for the reasons stated, and hopefully you'll write us a nice draft, so.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Prezi?
Yes. Are there decisions favorable? You can proceed. Send us in a draft which we will adopt, and you'll be all set.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else to bring up? My next meeting, if you noticed, there's only two hearings.
Didn't, but I like that.
This is, I mean, it's still only 9:10. But we, we, we were like 8:30 before we even took out the current ones. And I'm like, oh no, I don't want to lose my record. Well, the mic likes that we get out of here early.
They tell them stories, you know.
We used to go.
When I used to be on this board, I mean, I've been on this board almost 20 years now.
Move, uh, we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. To adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Or adjourned.